The March 8, 2018, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Shelton, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Zhang.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Freiling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
We have the council meeting minutes of February 8, 2018. Any corrections, additions?
Will be approved in a second.
Ms. Shelton?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
We have no matters of special privilege today, so that will take us directly to public hearings, the first and only of which is a special use permit by Union Baptist Church Fellowship Hall addition, 108 Alice Street, PCR 18-002. Ms. Burke?
Good afternoon, Mayor Freiling and members of council. Union Baptist Church is requesting a special use permit to construct this 2,600-square-foot addition to the existing church at 108 Alice Street. The addition will contain a fellowship hall, storage, a single restroom, and a kitchen. The proposed addition meets all the setback requirements but does not address existing nonconformities on the site. The applicant's statement was included in your packages. 108 Alice Street and all surrounding properties are designated as low-density, single-family residential in the 2013 comprehensive plan. This property and all the surrounding properties are zoned as single-family dwelling RS2. Churches may be allowed in this district with a special use permit. The property is not located in an architectural preservation area or the corridor protection district, and therefore, no architectural review board approval is required. The architect has provided some conceptual sketches for your reference, and those are shown here. Based on the sanctuary size, the church is required to have 19 parking spaces. There are four spaces currently on the site. Staff has been informed that this is a neighborhood church and members frequently walk here to attend services and other functions. Therefore, 19 spaces would not be needed. Since the applicant is not increasing the sanctuary size, and the sanctuary size dictates the number of parking spaces, the parking is nonconforming, and additional parking is not required for this proposed addition. The portion of the existing building, approximately 96 square feet, encroaches into the 35-foot setback by four feet. This encroachment contains existing restrooms. The proposed addition will meet all setbacks and will not increase the existing setback nonconformity. The church does not currently contain any space to hold meetings or other gatherings. There is also no handicap-accessible restroom facility within the church, and existing conditions do not allow for food to be prepared on-site to serve the congregation. Planning Commission reviewed this application and held a public hearing at their February 14 meeting. Only the applicant's representative spoke during the public hearing. Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval for the special use permit for Union Baptist Church at 108 Alice Street to construct a 2,600-square-foot addition to contain the fellowship hall, storage, kitchen, and bathroom attached to the existing church, conditioned upon a buffer being added between the new addition and the property to the west to enhance screening with the existing residents. I'm available if you have any questions.
Questions?
No questions.
With that, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody who'd like to address counsel on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address.
I hadn't planned to speak, but my name is Julie Smith. My question regarding the, if the church consists of, the attendees there are neighbors and residents, have they, I mean, have they been asked about, you know, street parking and all that during the church service? Or, you know, because my feeling is, is the fellowship hall will be used for weddings, special events, things that will not necessarily involve the members of the church, but might involve members of the community.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Burke, would you mind addressing how we go through notification of neighbors?
Certainly. So, the property was posted with a sign when the application was received, and then all adjacent property owners were notified via first-class mail of the request. Staff only received one inquiry, and they were just curious as to where the, where the project was in the process, but there was not any questions or anything regarding parking.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address counsel? Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing. I'll come back to counsel for discussion. Mr. Foster?
This is an easy one. I'm ready to approve this.
I'm ready to approve it, too. I will say that I have been in their existing fellowship hall, and it is quite small, so I can see how they would want to enlarge it, and particularly to include a kitchen. Fellowship hall of my community church always had a kitchen, so, I mean, to me, the two go together. So, glad to approve.
I think it's easy for me, as well. I think, you know, in these times where we find ourselves more time impoverished and distracted with cellphone and technologies, you know, having a neighborhood fellowship hall like this to allow people to get together and interact, I think, is, is an important thing for not only Highland Park residents, but the community at large, so I think it's a good addition.
Yeah, I'll also be approving this proposal as well. I just wanted to congratulate the applicant on moving forward with this application. From what I can understand, in my short time here in Williamsburg, that, that this church is an anchor for the Highland Park community, and we've all been blessed to have been invited to events there, church gatherings and services, and it's just great to see that they're moving this step forward, so I'll be approving this.
Yeah, and I concur with my colleagues. The existing space that they use is, it's difficult at best to negotiate, and it's just encouraging that a congregation has the wherewithal these days to invest more in the infrastructure and to provide this sort of amenity for the community and for, for the congregants at the church, because it gets harder and harder with young people to get them involved in any sort of organized activity, so I'm, as to, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the special use permit as recommended by Planning Commission.
Second.
Ms. Shelton?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Takes us to monthly financial statement. Anything anybody has questions on, anything you'd like to highlight, Mr. Collins?
I'd just like to take a moment and ask our new finance director, Barbara Dameron, to come forward and go, go through the finance report briefly, and this also gives an opportunity for Barbara's first appearance in front of council and the community in a public meeting.
Welcome, Ms. Dameron.
Thank you, and mayor, members of council, you have before you the financial report for February 2018. On page one, which compares the general fund revenues for 2018 to 2017, I'd like to remind you that in regards to the room and meals tax, there is a change in the way, the timing of when revenues are recorded for those two taxes, so they're not comparable. Essentially, 2017 has an additional month of revenue than does 2018. So, with that, I'd ask you to turn to page five, where the rooms, meals, and 1% sales tax is recorded according to the month of activity, which is comparable. And you'll note on that page that for the month of January, with rooms tax, we're showing a 7% decrease. I'll remind you that there was some inclement weather during that month, which we believe impacted that revenue stream. However, your meals tax has increased almost 6%. And then if you'll look at the bottom of that page, the 1% sales tax, you'll note that for December, we're showing a 2% decrease compared to December of 2017. However, if you'll look through the remaining months, you'll note that even with it being lower than 2017 compared to the other Decembers since 2010, 2018 is higher than those months. So, that concludes my comments, but I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
And I would just point out, for January, for Williamsburg, a 7.5% decrease in rooms means $5,700 and some, so it's not a, a large number, even though the percent seems high.
And we are still being impacted by the incorrect allocation of sales tax to the city that should have gone to James City County, and so the comparison's unequal, and we're paying some of that money back by getting less.
Correct. In 2018, we're starting to see that money be paid back, and also, I would think that for most of '17, you received that money, and so it's not very comparable at this point. That is correct.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, this takes us to the monthly departmental operating reports. Mr. Collins, anything you'd like to highlight there?
Staff's available if council has any questions.
Hearing done. We'll move on to the city manager reports. We have two today. The first is Williamsburg Regional Library Fiscal Year 2019 Budget Presentation. Betsy Fowler, Library Director. Welcome, Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, mayor, members of council, for the opportunity to come before you and talk about the library briefly. We wanted to highlight a few things that are happening at the library in regards to our strategic report and our goals. The first one is strengthening community connections. WRL uses partnering to expand our reach in the community, reaching current users in new ways, as well as reaching new users. We have formal partnerships with several local institutions, including the Williamsburg-James City Schools, the AARP, the League of Women Voters, the Richmond Vet Center, and our newest partnership is with William &amp; Mary Libraries, where we're going to open opportunities for both Williamsburg users and William &amp; Mary faculty, staff, and students to use both collections. The Williamsburg Library is a community venue that offers space for both library and community programs and events. The Williamsburg Library on Scotland Street, the theater, the gallery, and the meeting rooms hosted a total of 2,560 events in 2017, including concerts, plays, exhibits, and more, with a total attendance of 66,476. The library is a community nexus where people from all walks of life come together to exchange ideas and learn. The library is also an important anchor for downtown Williamsburg, drawing thousands of people who combine library use with shopping, dining, and running other errands. Through our outreach services, Williamsburg Regional Library brings library collections, programs, and services to those who cannot come to our buildings, whether in continuing care facilities, neighborhoods, before-and-after-school programs, and preschools. Williamsburg Regional Library Mobile Library Services makes it possible for all community members to enjoy their library. Our second strategic goal is communicating and raising awareness, and over the past five weeks, we have really been communicating and raising awareness. As you probably know, the library was in a competition to be named the best library in the nation. Members of our community cast over 31,000 votes in the past month for the library, and although we placed second, as one of our users put it, "We're the best library east of the Mississippi," and the contest actively engaged the community and staff and raised awareness of Williamsburg Regional Library and library services locally, across the Commonwealth, and the nation. And I want to especially thank Mr. Collins and his wonderful staff for all their support over the past few weeks, as well as city council, the Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Authority, the schools, and all of the many organizations and institutions that promoted the library over the past month. As part of our communicating and raising awareness, Williamsburg Library listens to community needs and interests and uses those interests to develop innovative and exciting programming. From our Steam Saturday events that promote family-centered learning about science, technology, engineering, art, and math, to a March series on Eating Local, to our new art film series, the Scotland Street Series, Williamsburg Library offers programs for all members of the community. In the past year, Williamsburg Library offered over 3,304 programs for users of all ages across all library locations and outreach. And our final strategic goal is reimagining library spaces. The library is also filling a need for the community, especially school-aged children, to be creative by developing makerspace opportunities. With a grant from the library board, the library is developing plans for adding makerspace resources that can be used both in the library, as well as with our mobile library services out in the community. Our makerspace recently visited Lafayette High School as part of our partnership with WJCC Schools to look at their makerspace stations and see how we can collaborate together. And finally, by rearranging space in the Williamsburg Library, well, I've lost my slide. Here we are. Children's area, we've been able to open up room for preschool play area that has proven popular this year with families with younger children. The library is blending play, an essential component of learning, with reading, literacy, and interactive programming in order to expand resources for parents and children. And finally, the library board has engaged an architect to do an assessment of the current Williamsburg Library facility, and he will be reporting back the end of this month on how we can prepare for the next 20 years of service. And I think those are all of my highlights for our activities this year, and I wonder if anyone has any questions about the budget.
Oh, this all looks very good.
No, no. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you all.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler, thank you for coming in, and there's no doubt that what you do at, at the library, both here in James City County, is, is of great service to the community, and I know a lot of people take advantage of it, and I often quip that I should have taken more advantage of it, when I should have.
You still can.
It's still time. So, you talked a little bit about, you did 2,500 events and 3,300 programs. Those are two different categories. Of the events, how many of those are just library-sponsored versus rental of space?
I think the number, the 3,300 number, was all library programs across all buildings. The 2,500 number is the number of library events and public meetings that occurred at the Williamsburg Library on Scotland Street and at the Stryker Center. So, it's combining those two facilities.
And those do generate revenue. Do you charge a fee for the space?
We do. A lot of the events are library events, and also, I know Economic Development Authority and other local community organizations are using it as a venue more and more. Those don't generate outcome, income, but we do have some income generated by private organizations that rent the spaces.
And so, I guess my mind was just wondering, you know, as we, as we're confronted with tightening budgets, you know, decreasing our level of income and higher expenses, just like the library, you know, is there an opportunity to evaluate those fees that you charge? Is, you know, could, could you massage them in a way that might generate a little bit more revenue and then perhaps be less impactful on, on the contributions from James City County, the city, and York County?
We're happy to go back and look at that again. We've had some discussion over, as you say, there's a fine balance between how much you charge and if people are willing, organizations are willing to pay that amount, but we're happy to go back and look at those numbers again.
I think that might be helpful. Okay, so, no other questions. Thank you again. I think, again, as, as Mayor Hallman called it, "It's a crown jewel in our community," and I believe that to be true, so keep up the good work.
It's a great library because it has great support from the city of Williamsburg and James City County and York County, so thank you for all your decades of supporting this library system.
Thank you, Betsy, and for your presentation, and just great to hear that you guys have a partnership with William &amp; Mary Libraries now. That's just one of those ways to, to connect our campus with the city in terms of resources, which is always important. Also, got to speak to your dedication. I was going out with, with a friend, and, and he, he's from the governor's office that night, and you and a bunch of, you know, just a bunch of staff members were just walking around saying, "Vote for, vote for us in the competition," and after you guys had left, he was so impressed, I was like, "You better tell the governor that we have the best dang city."
That's right. That's right. We were hand-selling that library.
Or at least just the best library, but no, again, appreciate your, your month, your annual report, and, and I guess we'll, we'll take in stride the, the fact that we are the best library in, what, east of Mississippi, so.
That's right.
We'll take that.
Thank you. Thank you all.
So, any chance of a recount on the Leslie Benop Award?
I don't think so. In the end, they, they pulled out 9,000 votes in a single day. It turned out the Denver Broncos went on the local TV stations and pushed, and they had 14 high schools that got on board, so they're a much larger metropolitan area, so we were outnumbered by people, but not by passion. We were really trying. Thank you.
Could you, could you just say a few words about what the Stryker Center's facilities have added to the library's ability to connect with the community?
Yes, I can. The most important thing they've added is the library is growing so rapidly, and every inch of space in Scotland Street is being used, so it really has opened up more space for a lot more programming for the community and also the, a venue for people in the community to come and hold programs, as well as exhibit area. We had some great partnerships. We had a great program, especially with World War I and the local Army Museum, and a lot of veterans, not veterans of World War I, but veterans from other wars came and really appreciated. We had the bus come, and they could tour the military bus, as well as the exhibit. And we're planning several other collaborative exhibits in the exhibit space. I've seen the whole facility being used several times for, I think, a Taste of Williamsburg is coming up. The local farmer's market had a wonderful series there where they were using all of the spaces. I'm trying to think what other big events have occurred. Several, all, a book event that was using the facility, and a lot of times when it's booked like that, they're using the entire building, so it's really nice to have the open public areas, as well as the individual meeting rooms for people to do breakouts.
Right. Well, thank you very much.
Oh, and Shark Tank, forgot that, too. That's right.
And just to add my appreciation for everything that you and all of the library's staff do to contribute to the quality of life in this community. We deeply appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. This takes us to the second city manager report, the execution of contract for Kiwanis Park renovation project and shelter number one replacement at Waller Mill Park.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor Freiling, members of city council. As stated, I'm here to discuss the Kiwanis Park playground renovation and Waller Mill Park shelter replacement. Renovating the Kiwanis Park playground area is included in the city's FY18 Capital Improvement Plan, using funds from FY17 and FY18. The project was deferred due to hosting of the National Softball Association Class A World Series last year. Kiwanis Park was established in 1969, and the current playground and shelter were installed in 1992. These amenities have served the community well for many years. However, in order to continue to provide a safe place for children to play, as well as meet the accessibility standards set forth in the Americans with Disability Act, the playground and shelter area need to be renovated. The scope of work includes replacing the shelter and playground equipment at Kiwanis Park, as well as adding an accessible path and outdoor exercise equipment. Also included in the city's FY18 Capital Improvement Plan is replacing shelter number one at Waller Mill Park and adding the addition, adding an accessible path to the shelter. Waller Mill Park opened in 1972, and shelter number one was actually an existing amenity when the property was purchased. The scope of work for this project includes replacing shelter number one, as well as adding the accessible path. The project was advertised as a request for proposal on November 29, 2017. Three proposals were received. After interviewing all three prospects and completing a review of references, the company All Recreation is qualified to perform the work. The funds appropriated for the capital improvement project total $471,250. The bid to complete the work is $440,000. An additional $30,720 will be used to purchase outdoor exercise equipment, which will also be installed by All Recreation. This is a 3D rendering of the new playground that will go in at Kiwanis Park. When we were working on establishing, you know, what we wanted for the playground, our number-one priority was safety. You'll notice in this playground that we are using poured-in-place playground surfacing. This is the, the highest standard of playground surfacing today. This allows us to meet all the safety requirements, as well as the accessibility requirements at the playground. You'll also notice, the second most important thing to us was trying to make sure that we maximize the play value in this playground. We wanted to make sure that it was a creative place for kids to play and to learn, and in doing so, we tried to find some very unique pieces of equipment that are not available in other, other playgrounds within our community or surrounding communities. Two that I'll highlight today are the REV-8. So, this is a climbing, a piece of climbing equipment that also spins. It is a controlled spin that can only go so fast to maintain the safety, but it is a very creative piece of equipment that is very popular at the locations that it does exist. Unfortunately, nowhere around here, so it would be a very unique piece to our playground at Kiwanis. Another one is the ZipVenture zip line, something that is a similar model at James City County Park, very popular. This one is a newer and improved model, will be very unique to our playgrounds, and something that we think would add quite a lot of play value and would allow us to have Kiwanis Park be a true destination playground, something that brings people to the community to use. In addition to that, you'll notice back on the overview, we had a walking path that went around the entire perimeter of the playground. Along that walking path, there will be benches, covered benches and some uncovered, as well as outdoor exercise equipment. This will allow it to truly be a park that an entire family can use. A parent can come use the exercise equipment while still monitoring their kids and maintaining, you know, a safe watch on them. We will also be replacing the shelter. The shelter that will go in at Kiwanis will be larger than this. It'll be 20 by 36 feet, however, this similar design, and it, the path that goes around the playground will also extend to the shelter and to the accessible parking at Kiwanis, giving the whole playground and whole area, finally, accessibility and meeting all current standards. This gives you an overview, so you can see from the parking lot, the path will extend to the shelter and then to the new playground area. At Waller Mill Park, we will be replacing shelter number one, which is across the bridge by the water at Waller Mill Park. We'll be replacing it with a shelter very similar to this one, and on the right, you'll see a, a crushstone path that we will have very similar to that, that will connect the bridge at Waller Mill to the shelter, giving an accessible route all the way to the shelter, something that we previously did not have. I have with me today Eric White from All Recreation. We are available to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Questions?
This looks a lot of fun, like a lot of fun. This is adjacent to my neighborhood, which I'm excited about. Zip line, how big a person can get on that?
So, the zip line is rated for kids 5 to 12, however, it is able to, to hold a larger weight.
Okay. This, this looks awesome. You know, this park is used a lot, up and down that street multiple times a day, so that's exciting, a community amenity. Parks and Rec is one of the, certainly one of those fun things that the city does, but this is also, is a core purpose of city government, so happy to approve this.
So, thank you, Michael, for the, the presentation, and I agree with Scott that, obviously, these are two of our most-used parks in the community, and want to be sure they're up to, to standards, both for safety and for ADA. And as far as ADA goes, when you say accessible, what all is meant by accessible, as far as who can use it, and is the equipment, the new exercise equipment, also accessible?
So, so yes, there are specifically four pieces of equipment in the new exercise equipment that are transfer-accessible, so they'll be able to be used by all. Some of the other equipment is, is lower-body equipment. However, yeah, we have, by accessibility, everything is reachable, so they'll be able to get to all the pieces of equipment right now. The playground is, you know, in the middle of a field. It does not meet the accessibility standards as far as access to get to the playground, so we will have access to the playground. All of the play equipment in the, in the playground itself is accessible with all the right platforms and things, which was something that the current playground was lacking, and the REV-8 in particular is an accessible piece of play equipment as well.
And so, the, the paths are all of a certain width to accommodate, I assume, wheelchairs and, and the other equipment as, as well?
Yes, ma'am.
And back to Scott's point about the weight of someone that can be on the, the zip line, so how do you sort of keep those above a certain age and weight from, from using some of the equipment?
So, as per playground's safety standards, there will be all the proper signage and notices of what the playground and what the equipment is, is rated for and used for. Outside of that, you know, certainly, we will, we'll do our best to, you know, inform the community using those signs and reinforcing that.
And, and the improvements here will not impact with what's being done for the Parks and Recreation Survey and Master Plan? I assume that this will all just roll in to, to what's, might be used or developed with that?
Yes, ma'am. So, the company that is working, Green Play, who is doing the master plan for us, is well aware of all of the plans that we have as far as current development in all of the parks.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Will there be surveillance cameras? Because I would love to see Barb and Scott on the zip line.
I have a raise.
Yeah, thank you. You know, this, this Kiwanis Park's obviously been here for a long time. I remember playing there as a kid and taking my own children there, and, and as Vice Mayor Foster says, every time I go by there, there's, there's, you know, a handful of people there. So it gets a lot of use, and, and so that, to me, that kind of justifies the investment. It is a nice, nice neighborhood amenity, and I particularly like the idea of putting in the exercise equipment in there as well to give the adults something to do, and I think most everybody else is fitness-conscious, maybe not me enough, but, but it's good to have that out there. But with that comes additional maintenance costs, I would think. Is there any estimate of, of how, how the ongoing cost of maintaining the equipment and the surface, what that would look like versus what it does today?
So I don't have any specific numbers for you. The, this playground and this setup was actually done to help us with maintenance. So poured-in-place rubber surfacing is the playground surfacing that requires the least maintenance of all playground surfacing that meets requirements. So currently, at Kiwanis Park and at all of our other playgrounds, we have what's called engineered wood fiber. So that engineered wood fiber has to be replenished every year, which is at a significant cost, and with this poured-in-place surfacing, it does not. It is, like the concrete walkway around it, it is, is good for a, a long period of time. There is obviously always unforeseen maintenance issues, but all of the equipment was selected and the materials for everything was selected in order to try to reduce the amount of maintenance and the maintenance costs as much as possible.
And I heard what you said, but even the exercise equipment, you would think that that would get, you know, a lot of wear. Is it a five-year, 10-year lifespan?
I would have to get back to you on the, the exact warranty for the, the information there. However, like you said, it, we, we did pick a, a line of equipment from that manufacturer that has as long a lifespan as possible. There is, like you said, some moving parts and hydraulics that have to be regularly serviced, but as long as the equipment is, is regularly serviced, we don't anticipate, you know, a lot of replacement fees across.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael, for your presentations, and I, I concur with my colleagues and all the comments they've said so far, although I will say, I enjoy Kiwanis and Waller Mill a lot. Hopefully, one day, I'll take my kids there, but for now, it's just me. But in, in terms of, can you speak to, I know you, you've mentioned this a little bit already, but in terms of the new material that you guys are doing for the surfacing, just kind of what's the contrast with the current material we're being used? Is it, is it better for, I guess, if kids are playing basketball and one of them falls, it's not as much of an impact on their body parts, not scrape as much? I'm just kind of curious to see how that plays out.
Eric, would you like to speak to the surfacing? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Speaking to the surfacing, as far as impact continuation, you're talking about a child falling. Have you been to, like, Mid-County Park, the local, some of the other in James City County? This is a, the best way to describe it, if you haven't seen it, is a, it's a unitary system. It's a two-pore system. It goes in, you pour a base coat, then you pour a top coat application to it, and as far as falling, it's going to feel like you're kind of walking on kind of a spongy surface. So it is, it is a unitary rubber. It's a solid surface flooring, but obviously, as you transition from the concrete onto that rubber, you're going to feel yourself basically go down into it.
Gotcha.
If that means. So as a child falling, as far as a head impact criteria or an impact rating, when they fall, it's going to actually absorb the fall, whereas when you have wood carpet, engineered wood fiber, and it displaces, it doesn't actually absorb that fall.
Gotcha. And I'm assuming since this is high-grade, it's going to come a little bit more expensive than the previous surfacing that we've used for it, right?
EPDM is probably the most expensive surfacing, obviously, you can get, as Mike was saying, but with that, you get the fact that you don't have to top it off every year, you don't have to replenish it, and most of the time, when it is maintained, which I know this department will, it'll last a lifetime of the actual playground.
No, that's great, and I think it's, it's justified with the cost. We, I think it's definitely paramount to maintain safety at, at the play level, and I'm also just glad to see that we, we are striving for greater accessibility as well in our park system.
From, from an accessibility standpoint, creating a multi-generational park like this, where you may have active seniors out and all age groups out there, to have the whole area, the whole area accessible would be a great benefit to the community.
Gotcha. That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Michael, Ms. Ramsey mentioned the Parks and Recreation Master Plan survey that's underway right now, and trying to get a sense from the community what the residents feel is important for the city to do. Can you speak a little bit to why we're going ahead with this now, instead of just incorporating this as one possible option through the master plan?
If I may. I'll, I'll handle it. The, the city's moving forward on this one because it's dealing with a risk management and safety concern. If you'll recall, several months ago, staff informed council that the playground surface and the children playground no longer had safe, and some of the tree roots were starting to come up through the surface and create an unsafe hazard. And so at, at that point, we, we knew that this project had to move forward regardless of what, a Parks and Recreation Master Plan is a heavily-used piece of equipment that's not changing. The, the neighborhoods adjoining that are, are becoming younger, with more young couples moving into the neighborhood, Councilman Foster, and, so not, no pressure on the kids yet, sir. But, so, so we're, we're looking at that from a risk management and safety perspective to, to do this, these components. Other component, the component that's not shown here that was in the original plan was replacing the basketball court and expanding a second court. That was held out, and so if, if the master plan comes back and says that's a desired use to, to restore, then, then we'll look at replacing that out more than the existing court also.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments?
Just really quick, in terms of, I'm looking at the recommendation, and it's just the $440,000, but just kind of curious, where's the extra $30,720? Is that from a general fund or a contingency line?
So the, the capital project total is $471,250. That's the amount available spend. The contract amount is the $440,000.
Gotcha.
Right. And, and right above that, in, in the memo, you'll see the $30,000 is the additional purchase amount for the outdoor exercise equipment. So the two combined there comes in underneath the project budget of $471,000.
Okay. So just to follow up on Mr. Zhang's question, though, the motion is only for $440,000?
Correct. The, the contract is for $440,000. The, the equipment is purchased separately and installed.
And that doesn't need any authorization?
No, that's less than $100,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that was where you were going.
Move the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract in the amount of $440,000 with All Recreation for Kiwanis Park and Waller Mill Park renovations.
Second.
Sheldon?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Takes us to the city attorney report.
I have nothing today.
Unfinished business? New business? This leaves us with open forum. Anybody who'd like to come forward and address council on any issue, we ask you to come forward, state your name and address, and if you could limit your comments to five minutes, we would appreciate that. Good afternoon, Mr. Murray.
Hello. Will Murray, 703 Goodman Street. I only had a question or a comment on this Kiwanis Park renovation project. I thought it was interesting that a mayor's question there about why are we doing this now, and so the city manager said, "We, we did this for safety reasons," and stuff like that. So it was kind of interesting that, who made that decision there and didn't inform other people? Is that, is that the protocol, that someone else can make a decision, and it kind of caught you off-guard, maybe? That wasn't the reason I came up here. My only question was, there was a picture up there that showed all this exercise equipment outside, in a sunny environment, and I don't know where that was taken. That exercise equipment rated for rain and snow and that sort of stuff, because like you said, there's maintenance. There's going to be maintenance, there's moving parts. It's not like it's just a, a dip machine that's just a hunk of metal. If you're, stuff's going to be moving, that's going to take some wear and tear.
And it's, council's understanding, and I believe staff, too, that this equipment is designed and rated for outdoor use, and so that's the intention from the start. So exposure to the elements is anticipated.
Okay. That's, I was just interested as to, the environment here in Williamsburg is different than California, so you could take a picture and say it's rated for, is rated for the environment, but it's rated for this environment without undue maintenance costs. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Anybody else like to address council? Seeing no one, close open forum? Do we have anything for closed session?
Today.
We have a motion.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Shelton.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.